Please rise, ladies and gentlemen. The 16th Sanggunyang Panlalawigan is now convened for its 30th regular session. The Honorable Board Member Aurelio J. Lebada III presiding.
The 30th regular session of the 16th Sanggunyang Panlalawigan is now called to order. We will begin with the invocation to be led by the Honorable Bernardin E. Office Mercado, followed by the Philippine National Attorney.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, today, as we deliberate in today's session, give us the wisdom to overcome passion. Give us that understanding heart to do away with prejudice. Give us the foresight to know what the future may devise. Give us the courage and strength to seek the truth and what is good. Give us the facility of language that we may be understood. And finally, our Lord make us mostly public servants of the province we deeply love and highly honor, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Mister Secretary, please call the roll.
Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes, Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III, Honorable Bernardin Office Mercado, Honorable Melgabal R. N. Cabo, Honorable Mercedes Ariano, Honorable Danilo R. Redd, Honorable Ismael D. Pilim, Honorable Jose Neril El Mangol, Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada, Honorable Lorena Rosales.
To the approval of the amendment of the agenda. For today's session, Madam Presiding Officer, we have a privileged speech by Honorable Antonio El Mangukang. We don't have any question hour for today's session. For the messages and correspondence, we have one communication from the Office of the Governor. For the communications and petitions, we have seven. For the municipal ordinances for the review of the board, we have three. For the first reading and repair to committees, for the proposed ordinance, we don't have any. For the proposed resolutions, we have nine. But we have to amend it because another achievement was awarded to the Province of Marinduke, particularly LGU Torrijos, so we will make it ten. And as well as the titles of the ordinance or the proposed resolution being authored by this representation will be rewarded accordingly. And we are going to furnish you a copy of the rewarded or the revised title of those ordinance as part of the amendment in the agenda. For the committee report, we have the committee report of the committee appropriation. And we will add the committee report of the committee of the whole with regards to the pick-up grid. For the calendar of business, we don't have any unfinished business. For the business for the day, we don't have any. For the unassigned business as well. For the proposed ordinance and resolution for third and final reading, we have one ordinance, for the said resolution ordinance, I mean. And Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of agenda as amended. I so move.
There's a motion from the Chairman of the Committee on Rules for the approval of the unamended agenda. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Okay, Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the gentleman from the municipality of Mogpo for his abilment of the privileged hour for the possible effect to the province of the oil spill that took place in the waters of Oriental Mindoro.
The gentleman from Mogpo, Honorable Mangukang, is recognized.
On February 28, 2023, a fuel tanker carrying 800,000 liters of industrial oil capsized off the coast of Oriental Mindoro. An ecological nightmare unfolded in the days that followed. Protect Verde Island Passage, or BIP, vehemently decries the devastation that the oil spill from Empty Princess Empress has and will continue to bring waters within and beyond the Verde Island Passage and the biodiversity hotspot known to have the highest concentration of marine species in the world. Madam Chair, for now, we are gravely concerned for impacted communities. Seemingly, in almost a week, thousand fisher folks in Oriental Mindoro, Palawan, and Semerara have been dropped off their livelihood as fishing activities are forcibly put on hold. Ngayon, Madam Presiding Officer, papasok na po ang habagat o southwest monsoon. At magbabago na ang ihip ng hangin at patungo na paitaas. Ito na po ang kinatatakutan nating lahat na bagtasin ng oil spill ang dalampasigan ng lalawigan ng Marinduke. Pinasasalamatan po natin ang ating minamahal at masipag na ama ng lalawigan sapagat agad po siya nagpatawag na multisektral meeting upang talakayin at planuhin ang mga pamamaraan kung ano ang mabisang gawin kung sakali ang oil spill ay umabot na sa ating lalawigan. Atin din pong pinasasalamatan ang Marinduke Council for Environmental Concerns, or MSEC, sa mahalagang impormasyon hingil sa usaping ito na kayo ng ipinagkalob at ipinagkatiwala sa atin. Ano po ba ang nangyari dito sa Mindoro Oil Spill? Noong February 28, lumubog ang Empty Princess Empress sa Tablas Strait dahil hindi umano sa problema sa makina, sa overheating, at malalakas na alon. Nagkakarga ito ng 800,000-litrong langis o industrial oil na nagsimula nang ang tumagas matapos lumubog ang barko. Mula sa UP Marine Science Institute, mahigit 36,000 hectares ng mga bakawan, bahura ng korales, at mga damong dagat ang maaaring maapektuhan. Ayun na rin sa DNR, kinakainangan agarang mahanap na ang lumubog na barko para magkaroon ng mas eksaktong mga pagtatansya. Ano po ba ang posibleng epekto ng oil spill? Una, fish kill at pagkamatay ng iba pang lamang dagat gaya ng alimang at shellfish. Pangalawa, hindi maaring kainin dahil na kalalason. Pangatlo, epekto sa paglaki, reproduksyon, at kalusugan ng mga isda. Pangapat, pagkabulok o paglagas ng mga dahon na magreresulta sa pagkamatay ng mga bakawan, albinesem o karamdaman maging ng mga punla. Mahalaga ang mga bakawan dahil nagsisilbi itong pangitluga ng mga isda at proteksyon mula sa pagbaha, paghuhon ng lupa at mga kalamidad gaya ng bagyo. Panganim, epekto sa mga ibang dagat dahil lumulubog sila sa tubig para kumain, nadidikit sila sa langis na dahilan para hindi na sila makau ng hanggang sa mamatay. Pangpito, ang kakulongan sa sikat ng araw dahil sa oil spill ay humahadlang sa paglaki ng mga korales, nagpapabago ng mga natural na proseso sa buhay nila, at pumbigil sa pagpaparami at humahan tong sakamatayan. Pangwalo, sa pagdumi ng tubig nahadlangan din ang paglago ng mga damong dagat. Ano naman po ang epekto nito sa kabuhayan? Una, nanakawan ng oil spill ang mga isda ng kabuhayan. Pangalawa, nakamamatay para sa mga isda at iba pang mga lamang dagat ang oil spill. Hindi rin maaring ibenta ang mga isda mula sa fish kill dahil delikado itong kainin. Pangatlo, hangga't hindi ligtas para kumuha ng pagkain mula sa dagat at delikado para sa mga isda, matagal na lumapit sa langis na kumanat, bawal ang mga isda. Pangapat, apektado rin ang turismo na inaasahan san natin maging daan para kumita sa mga nagagandahang dalampasigan at kalagatan, lalo na sa tuwing tag-init. Panglima, bawal lumangoy o lumapit sa apektadong tubig dagat. Panganim, maaaring milumilyon peso ang ikalugi. Ano naman po ang epekto pa sa kalusugan? Iba 'yung pag-iingat ang kailangan dahil maraming epekto sa kalusugan ang maaaring idulot ng agaran o pangmatagalang exposure sa oil spill. Una, maaaring makaranas ng sakit ng ulo o pagkahilo, irritasyon ng mata at ang lamunan, sakit sa tiyan, pagsusuka, at pagkapagod. Pangalawa, sa pangmatagalang exposure, tumataas din tsansa ng mas malalang sakit gaya ng sakit sa puso, paghinga, problema sa dugog, problema sa atay, at marami pang iba. Pangatlo, may epekto rin sa kalusugan, sa kaisipan. Pangapat, maaaring magdulot ng aksidente gaya ng pagkadulas kapag nasa dalampasigan. Panglima, pinakabulnirable ang mga matatanda at mga bata, at mangayro ng iba pang karamdaman. Ano ang dapat gawin kung sakali makontaminate ng oil spill? Una, ay kontak agad na magkilamos ng maraming tubig para mahugasan ang langis na hindi bababa sa isang minuto hangga't maaari humingi ng atensyong medikal. Pangalawa, kontak sa balat. Agad na linisin, linisan ang balat ng maraming tubig at sabon, hubarin ang anumang kontaminadong damit kung magpatuli ang pangati humingi ng atensyong medikal. Pangatlo, iba pang malalang karamdaman gaya ng hirap sa paghinga, humingi ng atensyong medikal sa pinakamaagap na pagkakataon. Kung hindi mapigilan ang patuli na pagkalat ng oil spill, lalo na ang pagkalat ito sa mismong mga pangpang, matatagalan din ang kinakailang rehibilatasyon sa mga apektadong lugar at posibleng ito ay sapitin din ang ating lalawigan. Maaaring manatiling apektado ang mga pamayanan, kabuhayan, kalusugan, at pagkain sa loob ng maraming taon. Ano po ba ang dapat nating gawin? Una, magka-isa. Pangalawa, manuwagan para sa agarang aksyon para mapiginan ang paglalapan ng epekto ng oil spill. Hindi lamang mula sa lalawigan ng Oriental Mindoro, lalawigan ng Palawan, at sa mga isla ng Semerara, maging ang ating lalawigan sapagat patungo dito. Gustuhin man natin at ayawan ang takbo ng hangin pag sapitang habagat ay patungo na pataas at ito tutumbuhin ang ating inang lalawigan. At para madinis ang bayang dagat, manuwagan. Manuwagan nga para sa agarang aksyon para mapigin ang paglalapan ng epekto ng oil spill at para madinis ang mga baybayang naapektuhan at maapektuhan pa ng spill na mula sa Philippine Coast Guard, OPG, DNR, at National Government. Pangatlo, panagutin at kung kailangang pagbayarin ang kumpanya sa likod ng lumubog na tanker at langis. Nakaganito, may obligasyon sila na rehibilatasyon ng mga napinsalang kalikasan at ilasyon sa mga naapektuhan at maapektuhan pang komunidad. Pangapat, tiyakin ang agaran at pangmatagalang rehibilatasyon ng mga naapektuhan kalagatan at coastal area. Madam Chair, sa atin pong privilehiyong pananalitan ito, ay makadagdag kalaman sa paghanda ng ating lalawigan sa nakambang napakalaking problema o suluranin sa ating baybayang dagat ng ating lalawigan. Hinihiling ko po na matalaka ito sa Joint Committee ng Environmental Protection and Human Ecology at Committee ng Disaster Risk Reduction Management ng Sanggunyang Panlalawigan upang makagawa ng mga naaangkop na legislative action para sa paparting na problemang ito. Magandang umaga. Maraming pong salamat.
Maraming salamat, Honorable Mangukang. The subject matter and concerns raised by Honorable Mangukang in her in his privileged speech is being referred to the Joint Committee or Committees of Environment and Disaster Risk Reduction Committee as prayed in the privileged speech.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, that closes the privileged hour, and we don't have any question hour for today's session. We now go to committee reports. The first item is the committee report of the Committee on Appropriation regarding various items referred to the committee. May I ask that we recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation.
The chairperson, Honorable Caballes, of the Committee on Appropriation is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this presentation as the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations will render committee report number 103-2023, subject of various referrals for the Committee on Appropriations to make recommendations to Sanggunyang Panlalawigan and Bank. The reporting committee to which was referred various referrals is now ready to submit its recommendations to Sanggunyang Panlalawigan and Bank that were adduced from the hearing conducted on March 9, 2023 by the Provincial Budget Officer and representative from the PPD as resource persons. And also invited were the chief of the concerned office requesting supplemental appropriations to answer queries from the members of the committee. There were 15 referrals. The three requests for supplemental appropriations, four requests for supplemental appropriations from PGM offices were initially tackled by the committee, namely: Number one, the 3,610,000 per various MOE and capital outlay accounts under the THR MO. Number two, the 12,500,000 total appropriations for various MOE and capital outlay accounts under the Office of the Governor. Number three, the 276,868 pesos for the repair and/or improvement of the PCL building. And number four, the 480,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the PBO. The PBO posed no objection for the approval of the request for supplemental appropriation provided that it would be dependent on the availability of funding resources. And an agreement was reached between the requesting office and the PBO that those accounts that were reduced in the annual budget will be prioritized for augmentation except those that are extremely necessary. Therefore, the committee hereby recommends for adoption of the following: Number one, a resolution appropriating the total amount of 2,610,000 pesos for various MOE and capital outlay account under the Office of the Provincial Human Resource Management Office, subject to the availability of funds, namely, letter A. A resolution appropriating the total amount of 12,500,000 pesos for various MOE and capital outlay accounts under the Office of the Provincial Governor, subject to the availability of funds. Number three, a resolution appropriating the amount of 276,868 pesos and 48 cents for the repair and/or improvement of the PCL building, subject to the availability of funds. Number four, a resolution appropriating the total amount of 480,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the Office of the Provincial Budget Office, subject again to the availability of funds. Letter B for legislative authorization or approval of resolutions of local special bodies. So number one, PDRMC Resolution Number Three. The committee deemed that proper that PDRMC Resolution Number Three be referred to the Committee on DRM for proper disposition. It is important to note that the Committee on DRM has already rendered its report on the subject and the board has already adopted on March 3, 2023, as per Resolution Number 465 Series of 2023, entitled "The Resolution Approving the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Plan of 2023 to 2025 of the Province of Marinduke" as approved and endorsed by the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council through PDRMC Resolution Number Three Series of 2022. Three, approving and endorsing to the 16th Sanggunyang Panlalawigan the CY 2023 Supplemental Annual Investment Program of the Province of Marinduke. Included in supplemental AIP are PPAs that are complementary priorities in Da'ila but are not included in 2023 AIP. Therefore, the committee hereby recommends for adoption of a resolution approving CY 2023 Supplemental Annual Investment Program of the Province of Marinduke as endorsed and approved by PDC and Resolution Number 45 Series of 2023. Adoption of a resolution approving the reprogramming of the priority development projects funded of the 20% development fund from CY 2016 to 2023 to the amount of 15,750,000 as approved and endorsed by PDC in Resolution Number 46 Series of 2023. Letter C is the review of appropriation ordinances. Number one, resolution declaring supplemental budget number three of the municipality of Bok, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Number two, resolution declaring supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Binavista, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Resolution declaring CY 2023 annual budget of the municipality of Binavista, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Number four, resolution declaring supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Gasan, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Resolution declaring the CY 2023 annual budget of the municipality of Gasan, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Solution number six, declaring supplemental budget number four of the municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Solution number seven, resolution declaring supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. And resolution number eight, resolution declaring supplemental budget number four of the municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Letter A, request for supplemental appropriations. An urgent pattern has been raised to the committee as well as to the Office of the Vice Governor as for the need for an urgency of the of the funding for the development of the Marinduke Tourism Website in the amount of 780,000 because of the impending or the upcoming latent activities and the tourism promotion activities of the province. It is hereby recommended by the Committee on Appropriations for the approval of the request for supplemental appropriation of the amount of 780,000 pesos for the development of Marinduke Tourism Website. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Caballes. What is not the pleasure of Honorable Caballes?
Madam Chair, this presentation will ensure the adoption of committee report number 103-2023 and that the resolutions forming as an offshoot of the said committee report will transfer to business for the day.
There is a motion from the reporting committee chair, Honorable Caballes, for the adoption of the committee report and for the corresponding resolutions being recommended to be transferred to business for the day. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The committee report is adopted.
Madam Chair, may this presentation be recognized for committee report number 102-2023 of the Committee of the Whole.
Proceed, Honorable Napa.
Committee report number 102-2023 of the Committee of the Whole on the subject proposed joint venture agreement by the community of the provincial government of Marinduke and to complete innovations and solutions regarding the smart solar microgrid power supply project. Initial recommendation to wait for the submission of the complete documents and the updates on the financial conditions status of the project. And number two, there should be an endorsement from the JDC Senate Committee as required under the PPP JD Code of the province. Recommendation, the recommendation, this is an initial recommendation that the committee will schedule a follow-up meeting or hearing as soon as the complete documents are submitted. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption of committee report number 102-2023 of the Committee of the Whole.
The report rendered of the Committee of the Whole as rendered and as revised, as amended, is now adopted.
Yes, Madam Chair, may this presentation be recognized for the committee report of the Committee on Human Resources. With the end of the conference of the members of the committee, this presentation as chairperson of the Committee on Human Resources favorably endorse the adoption of the resolution granting one step higher to the basic salary of Ms. Chona Rosa, nursery of the provincial health office detected three months prior to her compulsory retirement on August 13, 2023. And that the said accompanying resolution be transferred to the municipal report of the day's agenda.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the committee report as of the Committee on Human Resources as rendered? The Chair hears none. Then the committee report on the request for the grant of one step salary, one step higher to the basic salary of Ms. Chona Rosa is now adopted and the corresponding resolution is being transferred to business for the day. It's for inclusion in the business for the day.
All right, the Committee on Human Resources is proposing that the Sanggunyang Panlalawigan of Marinduke adopt a resolution supporting Senate Bill Number 1378 of the 19th Congress of the Philippines entitled "An Act Providing for an Increase and Automatic Adjustment Mechanism in the Personal Economic Relief Allowance Granted to Government Employees." And that the accompanying resolution be transferred to the municipal report of today's session.
Is there any objection to the report and recommendation of the Committee on Human Resources? The Chair hears none. Thus, the committee report of the human resource on the request for support for Senate Bill Number 1378 of the 19th Congress is now adopted and the corresponding resolution is being included in the business for the day.
The Presiding Officer, this presentation as a chairperson of the Committee and please an order. Favorably recommends for the adoption of resolutions of the following resolutions to it. Number one, proposed resolution number 2023-184, a solution expressing commendation and congratulations to attorney IBM Rhea Florido providing several prestigious awards and leading IBP Maridova chapter in its historic and exemplary showing during the integrated bar of the Philippines 2023 National Convention of Lawyers, Southern Davao City. Number two, proposed resolution number 2023, a solution expressing, 2023-185, a resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to Governor President J. Blasco Jr. for being granted the lifetime achievement award during the integrated bar of the Philippines 2023 National Convention of Lawyers, Southern Davao City. Number four, proposed resolution number 2023-186, a solution expressing commendation and congratulations to IBP Maridova chapter for its historic and exemplary showing during the integrated bar of the Philippines 2023 National Convention of Lawyers, Southern Davao City. And number four, proposed resolution number 2023-187, a solution expressing commendation and congratulations to Ms. Denaida Hamelia Betriya for being recognized as the most outstanding legal agent category C during the integrated bar of the Philippines. 2023 National Bar of the National Convention of Lawyers, Southern Davao City. And that the accompanying resolutions be transferred to Business Report.
Okay, there is a motion for the adoption of the committee report embodying favorable recommendations for the adoption of four resolutions of commendation to Attorney IBRia Florido, to Governor President J. Velasco, to IBP Marinduke, and to Ms. Denaida Hamilia Betria as mentioned by the reporting committee chair. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The committee report is adopted and the corresponding resolutions are hereby included in the business for the day.
Madam Chair, may this presentation be recognized for the committee report of the Committee on Human Resources.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Chair, the Committee on Human Resources Labor Employment favorably endorse the adoption of resolutions and the approval of the following resolution numbers. 2022-198, resolution number 2022, 2023, I mean, 199, 2023-200, 2023-202. And that the accompanying resolutions be transferred to the Business Report of the Day Session.
Reporting Committee Chair, consider just one resolution that you mentioned, the three awards of the LMD peso.
Yes, Madam Chair, this representation.
Can it be integrated?
Yes, but yes, Madam Chair, this is with regards to the award as the best public employment service office award with the best implementer for his best award and the best award. Okay, it will be consolidated into one resolution. And while the Saya Award will be separated because it is already headed by the Marinduke delegation and the other one is for the multiple government of Torios.
Thank you, Honorable Leva. The Committee is recommending for the adoption of two resolutions.
Three resolutions, I mean.
Three. Three resolutions.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of the committee report as amended.
There is a motion from the reporting committee chair for the adoption of an amended committee report. Any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved and the amended committee report is adopted and the corresponding resolutions are now included, are being included in the business for the day.
Madam Chair, for the calendar of business, we don't have any unfinished business. For the business for the day, the first item, the business for the day is the accompanying resolution of the committee on appropriation.
Yes, Honorable Caballes.
Madam Presiding Officer, as the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, this presentation would like to formally move for the adoption. This presentation would like to formally move for the, for an omnibus. This representation would like to submit an omnibus motion for the approval of the following resolutions. Number one, a resolution granting or approving the supplemental appropriation for the following PGM offices. Number one, 3,610,000 for various MOE and capital outlay accounts under the PHRMO. Number two, supplemental appropriations in the amount of 12,500,000 for various MOE and capital outlay accounts under the office of the governor. Number three, supplemental appropriation in the amount of 276,868 pesos for the repair and/or improvement of the PCL building. Number four, supplemental appropriation in the amount of 480,000 pesos for various MOE accounts under the provincial budget officer. Number five, supplemental appropriation in the amount of 780,000 for the development of the Marinduke Tourism Website.
It can be in, peding dunlang muna. So they will all be supplemental.
Appropriations.
Supplemental appropriation. Will they be consolidated in one resolution of approval or they will be individually approved?
Individual.
Okay, just an omnibus motion?
Yes.
Okay, there is an omnibus motion for the approval of five supplemental resolutions as reiterated by the sponsor, Honorable Caballes. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The chair hears none. Thus, the omnibus motion is approved. The resolutions approving supplemental resolutions of 2,610,000, 2,610,000 for various MOE and capital outlay of the office of the Provincial Human Resource Management Office. 12,500,000 for various MOE account and capital outlay under the office of the provincial governor. 276,868 pesos and 48 cents for the repair improvement of PCL building. Resolution appropriation of 480,000 pesos for various MOE account under the office of the Provincial Budget Office. And 780,000 for supplemental appropriation for for the development of Marinduke Tourism Website is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, as per legislative authorization or approval of resolutions of local special bodies, this presentation formally moves for the adoption of a resolution approving CY 2023 Supplemental Annual Investment Program of the Province of Marinduke as endorsed and approved by the PDC in Resolution number 45, series of 2023.
Is there any second? Julie seconded, any objection? The chair hears none, thus the resolution approving the calendar year 2023 Supplemental Annual Investment Program of the Province of Marinduke as endorsed and approved by the Provincial Development Council in Resolution number 45, series of 2023 is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, this representation also formally moves for the adoption of a resolution approving the reprogramming of the priority development projects funded out of the 20% Development Fund from the CYs 2016 to 2023 in the amount of 15,750,000 pesos as approved and endorsed by PDC in Resolution number 46, series of 2023.
Any second to the motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The chair hears none. Thus, the resolution approving the reprogramming of the priority development projects funded of the 20% Development Fund for calendar year 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023 in the amount of 15,750,000 pesos as approved and endorsed by the Provincial Development Council in Resolution 46, series of 2023 for the following provision of CCTV for the provincial capital, 4 million. Establishment of tourism-related facility for Pocatay White Beach, Torios, 5 million, construction of Box Culver in Bakao, Iba Ba'Gasan, 800,000, butterfly cage fabrication, 350,000, improvement of Sibuyau Demo Farm as learning site in Torios, 600,000 installation of solar lights at Morion Arena, Expo Bagasakan Center in Buak, 1,500,000. Provision of CCTV at Morion Arena, Expo Bagasakan Center in Buak, 1 million, and installation of platform at Pocatay White Beach, 2,500,000 is now approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and for the review of appropriation ordinances, this presentation files an omnibus motion for their approval or adoption of a resolution. Declaring supplemental budget number three of the municipality of Buak, Marinduke as operative subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget. Number two, resolution declaring supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Benavista, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Number three, resolution declaring the CY 2023 annual budget of the municipality of Benavista, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Number four, resolution declaring supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Gason, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Number five, resolution declaring the CY 2023 annual budget of the municipality of Gason, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Solution number six, solution declaring supplemental budget number four of the municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. Number seven, resolution declaring supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Santa Cruz, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer. And lastly, number eight, resolution declaring supplemental budget number four of the municipality of Torios, Marinduke as operative, subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer, Madam Chair.
Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The chair hears none, thus this will be separate resolutions. Thus, the omnibus motion for the separate resolutions for the following supplemental budget number three for the for the approval of for the declaration of the following to be a resolution for the declaration of the following to as operative and subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the provincial budget officer be approved. Supplemental budget number three of the municipality of Buak, supplemental budget number five of the municipality of Benavista, 22, and the calendar year 2023 annual budget of the municipality of Benavista, supplemental budget number five, series of 2022, of the municipality of Gason, the calendar year 2023 annual budget of the municipality of Gason, the supplemental budget number four, series of 2022, of the municipality of Santa Cruz, supplemental budget number five, series of 2022, of the municipality of Santa Cruz, supplemental budget number four, series of 2022, of the municipality of Torios are now approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be recognized for the sponsorship of various resolutions.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
May I move for an omnibus motion for the approval of the following resolutions. Number one, resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to the Marinduke Provincial Livelihood Manpower Development and Public Employment Service Office, LMD Peso, headed by Ms. Almasi Temtiman for being awarded as the Regional Best Public Employment Service Office Award for third to fifth class provinces category for the best special project for employment of students implementer and for the bestka award for the year 2022 by the Department of Employment, Labor and Employment Region for Mimaropa awarded during the first Dole Peso Regional Year End Performance Assessment held on March 8 to 9 in Tagaitai City. I so move.
Is it an omnibus motion for three resolutions or we are approving just one resolution?
Madam Presiding Officer, I am moving for one resolution.
Okay, so there is a motion for the adoption as of the resolution of commendation to the LMD Peso for garnering three kinds of award from the Department of Labor and Employment as mentioned by the sponsoring committee chair. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Mercy Rehano, any objection? The chair hears none, thus the resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to the Marinduke Provincial Livelihood Manpower and Development and Public Employment Services Office, or LMD Peso, for being awarded the best public employment service office for third to fifth class provinces category for being the best special project for employment of students or his best implementor for calendar year 2022 and for garnering the bestka award. All from the Department of Labor and Employment is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the adoption of a resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to the Marinduke delegation in the first Dole Peso Year End Performance Assessment, YEPA, held on March 8 to 9, 2023, in Tagaitai City, headed by Dole Marinduke Field Office Philip T. Alano for being the champion of Saya with 2023 contest authored by Honorable Araglo Che.
So this is not the, this is the number nine item?
Yes, Madam.
So this is not for LMD Peso?
Yes, Madam Chair.
But rather to the provincial delegation led by Dole Field Office. Is there any second to the motion of Honorable Leva, Julie seconded by Honorable Caballes, Honorable Rehano? Any objection? The chair hears none, thus a resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to the provincial, Marinduke provincial delegation for being a judge as the champion in the Dole Saya with 2023 award as led by the Dole Field Operations Officer is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for adoption of a resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to the municipal government of Torios Public Employment Service Office for being awarded as the Mimaropa Regional Best Peso Livelihood Implementer for the year 2022 by the Department of Labor and Employment Region for Mimaropa during the first Dole Peso Regional Year End Performance Assessment held on March 8, 2023, in Tagaitai City. Madam Presiding Officer, this is being co-authored by the lone representative from the second district.
So is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The chair hears none, thus a resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to the municipal government of Torios Public Employment Service Office, or LMD Peso, for being awarded as the Mimaropa Regional Best Peso Livelihood Implementer for the year 2022 by Dole is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may this representation be recognized for the accompanying resolution of the Committee on Human Resources.
Yes, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the adoption of a resolution granting one step higher to the basic salary of Ms. Chona S. La Rosa, nursery of the provincial health office effective three months prior to her compulsory retirement on August 13, 2023.
Any second to the motion, Julie seconded by Honorable Rehano, any objection? The chair hears none, thus the resolution granting one step higher to the basic salary of Ms. of Ms. Chona Esla Rosa of the Provincial Health Office effective three months prior to her compulsory retirement on August 13, 2023 is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for adoption of a resolution strongly supporting Senate Bill Number 1378 of the Nineteenth Congress of the Philippines entitled An Act Providing for an Increase and Automatic Adjustment Mechanism in the Personal Economic Relief Allowance Granted to Government Employees, I so move.
Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Rehano, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the resolution strongly supporting Senate Bill 1378 of the Nineteenth Congress of the Philippines entitled An Act Providing for an Increase and Automatic Adjustment Mechanism in the Personnel Economic Relief Allowance or PERA granted to government employees is now approved. We'll just request that let it be put in the whereas clause that we also make reference of the Benguet Resolution that was shared to us.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask to recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order and Justice?
Yes, what's the pressure of?
For the sponsorship of various resolutions?
Yes, Honorable Caballes.
Madam Chair, this representation as the Chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order files and hereby files an omnibus motion for the adoption of the following resolutions. Number One, resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to Attorney IVM Rio Florido for bagging several prestigious awards and leading IBP Marinduque chapter in its historic and exemplary showing during the Integrated Bar of the Philippines, 2023 National Convention of Lawyers held in Davao City. Second resolution, expressing commendation and congratulations to Governor Presbytero J. Velasco Jr. for being granted the Lifetime Achievement Award during the Integrated Bar of the Philippines, 2023 National Convention of Lawyers held in Davao City. Third resolution, expressing commendation and congratulations to IBP Marinduque Chapter for its historic and exemplary showing during the Integrated Bar of the Philippines, 2023 National Convention of Lawyers held in Davao City. And fourth resolution, expressing commendation and congratulations to Ms. Denaida Hamilia Betria for being recognized as the most outstanding legal aid clerk for Category C during the Integrated Bar of the Philippines, 2023 National Convention of Lawyers held in Davao City, Madam Chair.
Is there any second to the omnibus motion involving three resolutions? Julie seconded by Honorable Impiada, Honorable Rehano, Honorable Leva, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus, the omnibus motion is approved. The resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to Attorney IVM Rio Florido for bagging several prestigious awards and leading IBP Marinduque chapter in its historic and exemplary showing during the IBP 2023 National Convention of Lawyers. The resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to Honorable Governor Presbytero Velasco Jr. for being granted the Lifetime Achievement Award during the IBP 2023 National Convention of Lawyers held in Davao City. And the resolution of commendation and congratulations to IBP Marinduque for its historic and exemplary showing during the IBP 2023 National Convention of Lawyers held in Davao City are all approved. And the resolution, it involves four resolutions. And the resolution expressing commendation and congratulations to Ms. Denaida Hamilia Betria for being recognized as the most outstanding legal aid clerk for Category C during the IBP 2023 National Convention of Lawyers, all held in Davao City are now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, that closes the business for the day. We don't have an assigned business. Madam Presiding Officer, for the proposed ordinance and resolution for their internal reading, Madam Presiding Officer, considering that five of our colleagues are not present into the session, may I move for the Department of Consideration of Proposed Ordinance Number 16, thus, 23?
Okay, consideration of proposed ordinance Number 1623 is now being deferred as moved by the proponent.
Madam Presiding Officer, since there are no other matters to discuss with, I move that we adjourn.
The session is adjourned and our next session will be on March 17. That will be our next session and for now, this session is adjourned.